Good afternoon. Welcome to the public hearing, the second public hearing for the consolidated plan for 2025 through 2029 for the Community Development Department here in Decatur. We're going to be talking about the Community Development Block Grant Program in the course of this afternoon. And we're going to talk about, first of all, we need to talk about what Community Development Block Grant is. It was created during the Nixon administration. The whole idea was to bring together a number of competitive grant situations, put them all into one, because somebody finally figured out that the best plans are done locally. So that's where they set the planning, and so that's what we're doing now. Local communities know more about these things than some folks up in Washington, DC. So this is the way it works. Congress allocates, HUD disperses, and to do that, we have to come up with a consolidated plan and then five action plans in succeeding years before we start the process again. CDBG is a formula program, so you think of it like a pie. Total number of pies equals the total number of entitlement communities plus the states and for the retail. And so what Congress does is decide how much filling goes into that pie. How big each piece depends on each city's share. And our piece of the pie here in Decatur depends on population, poverty rates, and housing overcrowded. And those are all factors that we have to talk about in this plan that we're going to discuss today. Going back to 2003, we used to get $639,000. Well, we are, you can see where we've headed, that our current allocation is for $452,613. We don't know what the next situation is going to be, because as of today, December 12th, Congress hasn't bothered to pass a budget for any of the federal government, much less for housing and urban development. So the way we're structuring this, because there is a timetable at work, we're using provisional numbers, and when we take it to the council in January for approval, it'll be conditioned, and we'll talk about those conditions as we go through today. The rule tells us how we can spend the money. All of our, we, to do a project, they're actually called activities in community development. We know we have to have activities that are eligible and meet a national objective. All of the activities here in Decatur meet the low mod, the low mod income national objective. Here's some examples of the things you can do with CDBG funding. It's a long, long list. It's a fairly short list of what we can't do. We can't use our money to build new housing unless we work with a community-based development organization, which we did for the Seville project, but that project is virtually complete, so we're not looking at being able to expand that project or carry it forward into the new conflict. We can't use it for government expenses. We can't use it for operating and maintenance expenses. We could build a new park and plant the grass in that park and put in the lighting, but we can't use CDBG money to pay for mowing the grass or replacing those light bulbs. It's kind of strange, but that's the rule. So this is who we serve, low and moderate income people, 80% or less of the area median income. And right now, the area median income for the Decatur MSA is 82,500, so we're dealing with 65.7 as the number that's 80% of AMI. And then HUD adjusts those numbers based on family size, and that's the income chart that we have to use in our activities. That gives you an example of what it looks like. So we're required to do a five-year plan. They call it a consolidated plan because HUD has four different programs that they fund. CDBG there, one called Home, one called Emergency Solution Grants, and there's HOPL, which deals with housing for people with AIDS. Decatur only gets CDBG, you still call it a consolidated plan. So we do the plan. This plan that we're going to talk about today includes the action plan for the first year. Then each year subsequent, we'll do an action plan in support of this consolidated plan. Our program year begins April 1st and ends on March 31st. So there's a rule that tells us what we have to include in this. And fortunately, HUD gives us a template to work with, an outline, and we'll be using that as we go through today. Here's the calendar. Today, we're having the second, this is actually the second two required public hearings. We had the first public hearing in September. Now, at that point, we talked about the potentialities. Now we're presenting a plan, which will be open for public comment, a 30-day public comment period, which will begin tomorrow on December 13th. And we'll be accepting written comments on the plan. In January, we're going to be asking the mayor to approve, the mayor and council approve this plan and the first action plan. Our deadline for submitting the plan is February 15th, and then April 1st would be the first day. Now, that February 15th date is fluid, because at this point, we don't know what the allocation is. HUD's instructions to us annually do not submit a time plan or an action plan until you have the actual allocation. So one of the reasons that we're following this calendar, even though we don't have the number right now, the reason we're using provisional funding, asking for conditional approval, is so that when we actually get the allocation, we'll be in position to move immediately to submit the plan to HUD, get approval, and get started with the next, with the next five years. All right? I think I just talked about all of these things. So the allocation process, here's the bottom line, can take up to 60 days. If we do it this way, we can shorten that time period by at least 30 days. Okay. This is important. I've mentioned that we're using provisional numbers and we're asking for conditional approval. Part of that conditional approval is telling you the public and the mayor and council what we do when we get the real number. We will be, we have traditionally used 15% of our allocation, which is a regulatory, actually, it's a statutory cap for public services, and we propose to keep that at 15%. The balance of the new funding will be spread to housing rehabilitation and program administration, and there's a 20% cap on what we can spend on admin. So that's how we'll be doing it, depending on, and making adjustments as needed once we get the actual allocation. I think I've already talked about the fact that we're asking for, we'll be asking for conditional approval, so that we'll be able to start the program year as close to the program year as works out once we get the actual allocation. Consolidated plan is divided into four primary sections. We're going to be talking about the process, and part of that process is consultation. We started the consultation process in June, and over the course of the last six or seven months, we have, we have done, made extensive use of surveys. We have attended workshops. We've had in-person, one-on-one interviews. And what we think is, we've got is a consensus of the public, what the public would like us to be doing over the next five years. Process, we do a needs assessment, a market analysis, strategic plan, and then we've also got the first-year action plan, which will be presented today. In all but that section on the process, we have to talk about housing. We have to talk about homelessness. We have to use, talk about non-housing community development, which would be things like infrastructure improvements, public facilities, non-homeless special needs, that would be like the public services, services for young people, services for the elderly. We'll be talking about those as we go through. And we also have to talk about fairness, which is a very important part of the plan. We also have to address issues like citizen participation, monitoring how we're going to make sure that our sub-receipients, the organizations that we enlist to help us with our plan over the next five years, how we make sure they are in compliance with all rules. We have to talk about broadband accessibility. Unfortunately, that's in really good shape here in Decatur. That was an easy section to write, I will tell you. We also have to talk about hazard mitigation, and we have to talk about lead-based painting and its effect on housing here in Decatur. We, in the course of preparing the plan, we are required to consult. I mentioned that a few moments ago. We have, we have included interviews. We've done some focus groups. We've done workshops for targeted stakeholders, and we've made an extensive use, as I said earlier, of surveys. So here's some of what we have heard. Our CDBG assets should be used throughout the city instead of in targeted areas, all right? Which gives us greater flexibility. And our housing program should be targeted to owner-occupied units rather than rental units. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my associate, Keith Lampkin.
Thank you.
And he's going to talk about needs.
Needs and needs assessment. This section of consolidated plan discusses a lot of topics. Housing needs disproportionately, greater need, public housing, homeless needs, non-homeless special needs, and non-housing community development. The housing needs section, N10, N15, and N20, a lot of current, with a conference of housing affordability strategy, which is what we call CHAS. You've heard of CHAS, used a lot in North American cities, data from the Census Bureau. And of course, city discrepancies are too, too bad a source of abuse and cause because of CHAS data is a lot older than ACS. ACS sometimes is, they use it, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, but it was a long one there, sorry. The housing needs sections are guided by the requirements of 24 CFR 91205, HUD regulation. The grantee must consider, this is very important, grantee must consider income level, tenure whether it's owner, renter, and household type. I won't try to get into that. The grantee must consider housing problems, housing cost burden, overcrowded, subsstandard housing conditions such as lack of a kitchen and complete plumbing. HUD considers a household cost burden more than 30%. The same goes for housing, housing regulator, expenses such as mortgage, rent payment, utilities, and the rent access. A household spending on 50% is also considered extremely cost burdened. And we're going to break that down to you guys and show you 30 and 50%. That's one of the first questions that I'm going to ask folks when they come in and try to do their programs is, you know, if your landlord's spending 30% of their income or not, if they are, that's definitely red flag. One of the city's important partners, Decatur Housing Authority, although the DCA is a separate entity, the city still requires to consider the needs and plans of housing authority, the consolidated plan. Public has housing data as an account plan and was supplied by DHA, and I don't think they're, they're not a burden, a housing authority. The plan uses two measures relating to income levels, the AMI, which I mentioned earlier, 30% income, and this is HUD one, HUD adjusted median income. So between those two, HUD comes up with a good review. Cost burden for both renters and homeowners is a single most significant housing problem for residents in Decatur. Cost burden is a single most significant housing problem. Okay, here we go with the charts, love charts. You can see the charts, like renters on one side, owners, owners on the other. We've got the 30, 0, 30% AMI, 30, 50% AMI, and 58% AMI for renters. Same thing on either side of the chart, 30% for homeowners. Keep it public there. The deeper house. Cost burden 50%. Okay, renters and homeowners. Mostly you can see there, you are a burden, and the elderly, and owners, certainly the same thing. It's something relatively niche. Census data suggests populations on property cost burden, severely cost burden are renters, seniors living alone, both renters and homeowners, and households headed by single females. One of, of all households in Decatur, children under 18, 29% are headed by single females. Disproportionately, greater need exists among the number of racial ethnic group of, had a given income level, experience housing problems, at a greater rate, 10% or more than the income level is as a whole. Based on HUD's 2016, 2020 CHAS data, racial ethnic group experiencing disproportionately greater need are blacks, African Americans, and low-income, 30%, 50% in the low-income, and on bracket, and Spanish are both low-income and moderate-income, 50 to 80% AMI. So something for us to keep an eye on. Homelessness. Decatur is part of three-county Huntsville, Northern Alabama, not a continual care. Classified by HUD is a largely urban area. Lead agency for the continual care is Northern Alabama Coalition for the Homeless. NACH, they're headquartered in Huntsville. NACH is a nonprofit corporation that serves a continual management team for Huntsville, Decatur, Madison, Huntsville, and Worthy Counties. Home services for the continuum are concentrated in Huntsville. Unfortunately, the Decatur community meets regularly with the NACH to do the same touch. Developing the home status for Decatur was difficult. Since the 1904 time count, conducted annually, and it's not broken out specifically. Alphabase said the communities cannot appropriate areas. The city does not have homeless data generated locally, which is unfortunate, because we know there are homeless people here in Decatur. Non-homeless special needs assessment. This section discusses the housing, service needs of persons who are non-homeless but who may require some form of supportive housing. These include, this includes, these include an addendum to the elderly, for the 60-year-old, frail, frail elderly, persons with mental physical, development of disabilities, persons with alcohol or drug addiction, persons with HIV/AIDS, and families victims of domestic violence, dating by sexual assault and stalking. The grantee must assess needs for public services, public facilities, public infrastructure. Any activity funded with CDBG money must be knowledgeable to meet a national objective as provided in the CFR. Describe the jurisdiction's need for public services after we get our assessments and look at our surveys and talking to folks. Talk about number one, substance abuse, childcare services, services for abused children, services for seniors, with emphasis on services for frail, frail and elderly, services for the disabled, in that order. Describe the jurisdiction's need for public facilities, once again, from our surveys and talking to folks. Domestic violence shelters, number one, homeless shelters, number two, group homes for developmentally disabled, number three, a day shelter for homeless persons, number four. Describe the jurisdiction's needs for public improvements. Number one, flood drainage improvements, street improvements, sewer line improvements, sidewalk curbs and others, once again, in that order. Market analysis.
I believe that's me.
Yes, sir.
Now, we've, we're going through fairly quickly, because we showed you a few of those tables. We've got the draft copy, and I guarantee you, it's got more tables and maps than you'll ever be interested in reading about. But we've got it here, and we'll have copies spread throughout the community, and you can check the city website, the Community Development Department pages. They'll tell you where the hard copies can be found for inspection. And there will also be a draft on the, of this plan, on the city website, as well as a PDF of the presentation that we're making this afternoon. All right, so the market analysis. What we're trying to do is get a clear picture of the total environment here in Decatur, and so that as we make our plans for this year and the next five years, we'll be able to take those factors into account. We're going, in this section, we're going to be talking about number, cost, condition of housing units. We're going to talk about public and assisted housing. We're going to talk about special needs, facilities, and services. Barriers to affordable housing, non-housing community development needs, broadband needs, hazard mitigation. I think I already mentioned some of those. And if it sounds repetitive, some of these items show up in all three sections, plus we'll deal with them again in the action plan. For instance, we looked at, one of the things that we have to look at are the property types, all right? And so we, we look at this, and we figure, we found that overwhelmingly, the housing in Decatur is a single unit detached structures, single-family units. Now, this is where we've been into something a little bit different, though. We talked about the number of units. When we look at the number of units that are available or that are affordable, then the story changes a lot. Housing, HM, HAMF, stands for housing, HUD-adjusted area median income. So HUD likes to play with numbers, too. That's, they have a whole division at their headquarters in DC that does nothing but play with research and come up with data. So how, one of the questions that we're required to ask is this. How is affordability of housing likely to change considering changes to home values and or rents? And what we found is that, you know, for the foreseeable future, market conditions are going to keep pushing rents and mortgage costs higher. All right? That's just the way it is. That's not just in Decatur, that is pretty much across the board nationally. Affordability is, is a barrier to home ownership for low-income households. We know that, we looked at the census numbers. And what we found is that there weren't a lot of the units being offered for sale in Decatur or Morgan County. They're much below $200,000, $250,000. So we did a little math, and what we figured out was the mortgage payment on a $200,000 house, assuming a $15,000 down payment, would be approximately $1,840 a month. And that's not even counting utilities or other housing expenses, insurance. And those are all part of that, what is, 30% is considered affordable. That would be not just the mortgage or the rent, but all of the housing expenses. Well, what we found is to be able to afford that $200,000 house, and that's kind of where the, where things are headed. That $150,000 house five years ago is now at $200,000. And that's not just Decatur, that's all over. That means you better be making $75,000 or more a year for even to be close to affordable. You can see how that affects low-income households. We also looked at rents, rents are the same way. And affordable, new affordable rental units are just not being built, because the developers are looking at return on investment. And return on investment, unless you've got a low-income housing tax credit or some other subsidy built in, it's just unprofitable. Or it's profitable to build affordable housing as it is to build units that are renting for $1,000 or more a month. We have to talk about what is standard condition, what is non-standard. And so here in Decatur, it's a unit, housing unit that meets all state and local coves. Substandard is unit that is in poor condition. Okay. We have to talk about lead-based paint. Lead-based paint is a health hazard. It's, it's well-established, particularly for little kids who find that lead-based paint chips are like candy. That's what they tell us. And lead-based paints ingested, particularly with a young person, can have devastating results on, on the brain and development. So in 1978, they figured out that lead-based paint needed to be banned, '78. All the housing built after 1978 and since has been built with paint that is not lead-based. But we still have a lot of housing out there built before 1978, and the possibility, the probability that there's lead-based paint in is pretty high. So we have to deal with lead-based paint. We've, we've done some, some figuring around, and we think that there probably someplace in the neighborhood of 1,000 units, both owner-occupied and rental here in the Decatur community, that would be, would be subject to lead-based paint rules. We have some nonprofits dealing with the homeless here in Decatur, but one of our greatest shortages is an overnight emergency shelter. Right now, the closest emergency shelters are in Huntsville. We, we had to talk about special needs and facilities, and what we found is that we probably have an adequate number of facilities for most of those special need populations, with the exception of the homeless and probably persons living with, with AIDS. We've identified additional service needs, though. Supportive housing, and we came up with, this was through the consultation, the survey process. Supportive housing, anti-poverty and family strengthening programs. and family strengthening programs, financial literacy training, mental health and substance abuse counseling, parenting support, counseling and therapy, geriatric programs, education about mental health, suicide, there are organizations that are providing those services, but we need to do a better job of educating the public so that they know those services are available. Barriers to affordable housing. HUD is looking at this point at whether or not there are regulatory or zoning rules, we did an extensive survey on this, and what we found out was, especially since Decatur revised its zoning ordinance in twenty twenty two, the main barriers to affordable housing in this community are market related, that they're not related to government rules or regulations. The number one, home prices are too high for low and moderate income households, mortgage rates discourage home ownership, rents are too high for low income households, residents are resistant to building affordable housing in their neighborhood, and raw land is too expensive for development of affordable housing. You have to build expensive houses to justify the cost of acquiring land to develop, that's what the surveys told us, and it makes it very difficult then to come back with the funds that we'll have available for community development block grants to do much about affordable housing, but we have a strategy, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. We, we are asked, are there areas where households with multiple housing problems are concentrated, and yeah, we've found that in census tract four, census tract seven are where we come up with the, the greatest number of households with multiple housing It asks, are there areas in the jurisdiction where racial or ethnic minorities or low income families are concentrated, and yeah, we found that tracts, let's see, seventy nine, seventy nine, yeah, I mean, at that distance, you could almost read, but then, seventy nine, oh, we've determined where the Hispanic population, and that's the population that's seen the largest growth percentages in the last decade here in Decatur, so that's where those populations are concentrated. Hazard mitigation, we have to describe the vulnerability, there's a river out there, I think all of us know about that river, and so the best way to describe it is to look at the flood maps for the core Decatur, and yeah, we've got, we've got floodways that we have to be careful to build around when we talk about affordable housing, or any of our other programs, because we have to do an environmental review on every activity we do, and one of them, one of the things that we have to satisfy the government on is that we're not building in flood, floods. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Keith to talk about the strategic plan.
Thank you, John. Okay, I'm going to cover the strategic plan for you guys, the needs assessment and market analysis, which has been guided by the community development department, consultation, interviews, meetings, surveys, and public input, identified four priority needs for Decatur, low and moderate income households with unmet housing needs, community and public services, fair housing, public facilities, and infrastructure improvements. These priority needs are addressed with the following goals, so you had your needs, now we're going to come up with our goals, and this is important, we want to increase affordable housing opportunities, owner occupied, single family housing rehabilitation, public services, promote fair housing, enhance public facilities/infrastructure, homeless prevention services, acquisition and demolition, support programs, support programs through program administration. Geographical priorities, Decatur's twenty twenty four consolidated plan designated three local target areas. Based on feedback from consultation, public hearings, and surveys, the city has decided citywide is a geographical priority for twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. Citywide gives the city the flexibility to plan activities anywhere in the city, and we think that's really good, because something could pop up anywhere in the city, you might want to do some infrastructure, drainage projects, or some flooding issues, and you just want to limit yourself to certain census tracts, you got everything covered doing it citywide. Public and cities, facilities and infrastructure improvements have been designated low priority, at least for the first year of the consolidated plan. The city is not proposing any low priority activities in the first year action plan. Future proposals for low priority activities will be considered on a case by case basis. Anticipated resources, important reminder, HUD instructs grantees not to submit plans until HUD has released its annual funding allocations. I know we beat, that's like beating the dead horse, guys, but we got to say it, we keep saying it, and John and I both experienced this, when, you know, I had submitted a plan, and I used last year's numbers, and the new allocation came out, and it was a couple dollars off, just a couple dollars off, I had to submit the whole thing, had to go all the way back through, get the mayor's sign, go through the whole steps, all over again, I learned a valuable lesson, don't, don't put the cart in front of the horse. As of today, Congress has not yet approved that's budget for twenty twenty five, which began October first, twenty twenty four, you guys may not know what's the twenty twenty five allocation for three or four months from now, so you just, like I said, you have to be patient, I know you get pressure on folks, they want their money, they want projects on, et cetera, et cetera, we just can't do anything until all this stuff gets done. Over the five years of this plan, the city expects its highest spending priorities to be down payment assistance, owner occupied rehab, public services, and admin and planning. The city typically budgets fifteen percent of its annual allocation, the regulatory cap, to public services. As you can see on this chart, we use last year's money, and that's about the best you can do, just use last year's money until the new dollar figures come in. Okay, barriers to affordable housing, John covered this a little bit earlier, once again, we're not beating the dead horse, but this one comes back, and you notice the pettiness of this, it's because HUD's trying to send you a message. Home prices too high for low and moderate income households, mortgage rates discourage home ownership, rents too high for low income households, residents' resistance to building affordable housing in the neighborhood, NIMBYism, rate, raw land too expensive for development of affordable housing, bank requirements for issuing mortgage loans, not enough HUD-funded housing vouchers available, not enough housing units available for vouchers that are available. City's strategy to address these barriers is focused in owner occupied affordable housing. The community development department's home ownership made easy, H O M E, program office financial assistance to qualified low and moderate income households, the city provides a forgivable loan of up to fifteen thousand dollars to cover reasonable closing costs, principal reductions, and/or buy down to the interest rate. I think this is a good plan, a good strategy, and a good way to address affordable housing in a city of Decatur. Home strategy, the city is not proposing to use any CDPT funds directly to combat or address homelessness in the first year action plan, wherever several, several of potential public service sub recipients do provide homeless services, the city's strategy is to continue supporting the missions of public service agencies in Decatur, Morgan County that assist homeless, and other, and those in danger of homelessness. The city looks forward to receiving applications for public service grants from agencies in the future years, so if somebody's got a bright idea, they know how to help, come do this, and we'll see what we can do. Monitoring, it's policy of the city and the community development department to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local statutes, regulations, executive orders, ordinances, in particular, twenty three CFR ninety one, twenty four CFR five seventy, and two CFR two hundred. It is also policy of the city, community development department, that sub recipients must comply with all statutes, regulations, executive orders detailed in their respective sub recipient agreements, which basically that's saying that if you're getting CDPT funds, we're coming to look at you, you're not getting monitored, either desktop monitoring or an in-person monitoring. Oh, I jumped ahead of myself. For HUD's purposes, monitoring is a formal process used to determine compliance, technical assistance provided to sub recipients is not considered monitoring, sub recipient compliance is monitored annually through a site visit or a desktop monitor, got a little ahead of myself, this, this type is determined by doing a risk analysis.
You did risk analysis?
Good, good stuff. Annually on sub recipients, although every sub recipient is monitored onsite at least once every three years.
First year action plan. All right, so, we've talked about the, the needs, we've talked about the, the market environment, we've talked about a strategic net plan, so we've talked about the strategy, now we're going to talk about the tactics for implementing the strategic plan, all right? Again, we would remind you that the numbers that we're going to talk about are provisional, and nonetheless, something, I, I've never seen an even number, when they start dividing that pie, they really are dividing that pie, the closest, they'll round it to the nearest dollar, but they don't, but they don't round it to the nearest ten dollars, so four hundred and fifty thousand dollars even, I guarantee you, will change either up or down, so we're warning you ahead of time that what we're doing and why we're doing it this way. So, this is based on four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and over the course of the, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first year, and a total of a million eight over the four years after that, that's based on, on level funding, all right, and that funding number will be adjusted on an annual basis. So, these are our annual goals, we're going to, we're proposing that for the, for the next year, we'll increase affordable housing opportunities, we're going to work with owner occupied, single family housing rehabilitation, we're going to spend fifteen percent of our money on public services, we're going to spend some money promoting fair housing, and then we are going to support the program by doing the work that it takes to implement the program. We propose to invest a hundred and eighty thousand dollars into the affordable housing program, and assist up to twelve houses, or households, we're looking to invest a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in housing rehab, which we think will translate into twelve households privately. We're looking at investing sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars in public services, and we think that will assist up to a thousand people, and then fair housing, a thousand dollars, and we're going to be using that primarily to, for fair housing education, and not just the education, but the materials to assist with that, and then eighty seven five would be the admin to run the program, and there is a cap on that, a twenty percent cap, we can spend no more than twenty percent of our, our money on admin, fair housing we count as an admin expense. All right, so, the way we're going to set this up, we're going to have projects, we're going to do home pay, home buyer down payment assistance, we're going to do single family rehab, we're going to do public services, senior services, youth services, transportation services, fair housing activity, and then general program administration. And each of these programs, then, I talked about this a little bit, each one of these projects, in, in the, that first case, that's the forgivable loans, those are handled in-house at the community development department. The owner occupied, single family housing residents is handled for us by a sub recipient CAPNA, and we've allocated a hundred and fourteen thousand, again, provisional funding. The fair housing activity, that would, did I jump? I jumped, it jumps, okay, this is project, oh, I remember, project number six is fair housing, thousand dollars, and that's for printing and distribution of fair housing educational materials. Project seven would be the, the program admin, eighty seven five, and then, oh, I remember why we jumped those projects, because I've lumped them all together. So the proposed action plan would fund seven activities with grants, projects with grants ranging from thirty six two to eighteen hundred, that would be funding for Decatur Department of Youth Services, Morgan County Commission on the Aging, Volunteer Center of Morgan County, Mental Health Association of Morgan County, Decatur Police Department ACES Program, Parents and Children Together, Decatur Youth Enrichment. If we have an increase in the money we can allocate for public services, that would go to Decatur Department of Youth Services, and we have to reduce it, that's also where we would get reduction. Fair housing, it is, of course, a long standing policy of the city, affirmatively fair housing, affirmatively further fair housing, and we will be engaging in activities which promote fair housing, and educating the public about fair housing, and we also will facilitate handling of complaints when they arise, which means we will channel those primarily to housing and urban redevelopment. And we want to hear what you think, we'll be accepting written comments, if you'll send those to the email, that's Alan Stover's email, agstover@decatural.gov, and we'll be accepting public comments, written public comments, beginning tomorrow and for the next thirty days. And with that, we're done.
I thought it was books.
How's that?